All right, let's call the Monday, November thirteenth, Orno Town Council meeting to order. Roll call shows that councilors Marks, Berthasil, Kenny, Demerit, Powers, and myself, Councilor Wingard, our president, Council Chambers, Councilor Laraway will be joining us remotely. Our first item on our agenda is agenda review. We have any items for review? And seeing none, our second item on the agenda is approval of minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. We entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on the minutes of October sixteenth?
Can I just bring people's attention to the fact that that is Shelley Crosby's first effort with the minutes, and I think she did an amazing job.
Wonderful. Awesome. Okay, all those in favor of approval of minutes of October sixteenth?
All right.
Oh, it passes unanimously. Oh, we need a roll call vote, don't we? If Rob is online.
I am here.
Is he here yet?
Yeah, I'm here. My internet isn't great, so I'm gonna stay off camera.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
All right. Councilor Powers? Yes. Councilor Demerit?
Here.
Yep, yes, approve.
Councilor Kenny? Councilor Wingard, would you like to wait till the end?
Sure.
Oh, we'll have. Okay. Councilor Berthasil?
In favor?
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
And Councilor Laraway is online, and Councilor Wingard? Yes.
Did you get that? Okay, and I'm also in favor. So passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, next item on our agenda is public comment. Anyone who wishes to make a public comment on items not on our agenda is invited to come to the podium. Yeah, thank you.
I should know that. Jeff Gordon, um, I'm a little concerned about the trash cans on Wednesday. Um, I was out here on Main Street, and there was a woman with a walker, and she was mightily trying to navigate around about five trash cans that are blocking her way in the sidewalk, and she actually had to step off the curb into the street with her walker. I don't know what can be done about it, but it's might be a problem we need to think about.
So, um, I'm gonna give that job to Pat to work with Ed. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment? And do we have any comment online?
No hands raised at this time, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, let's move on to public hearing. And we'll start with public hearing A. A class one restaurant malt wine and spirits liquor license special amusement permit for music, dancing, and entertainment and victors license for Orno House of Pizza Incorporated located at one fifty-four Park Street.
Hello, Patrick Esty, code enforcement officer, and my recommendations are based off of town clerk fire. And today, Captain Dan Merrill, that's gonna give us recommendations. But paperwork and inspections have been completed. So based off of that, our recommendation is to approve it.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Dan Merrill, I'm the chief of police. Um, so I just wanted to let council know that since about September of this year, we've been receiving some noise complaints about OHOP's noise, um, potentially resonating from outside of their building, correct? Or, okay. Um, so what I did was I've had members of the police department monitoring the noise complaints as they've been coming in, um, and addressing the issues if there have been some. Um, and also having Ed Leskey working with code enforcement to go out and conduct some noise meter readings for the ordinance. So Ed went out and conducted that meter reading, got an ambient noise, and then did a noise reading on November third. I believe is what I put down. Um, it was a Friday night, um, eleven o'clock at night to twelve o'clock at night during the peak hours when the bars getting the busiest. Um, and we found that the restaurant was in compliance with the decimal reading for commercial two. It's allowed fifty decimals, and it was within that range. Um, also, along with that, um, I've been in pretty constant contact with the owner there to let him know that we've had residents that have expressed concerns and whatnot. And he's since, it's my understanding, reached out to code enforcement to try and figure out what are the remedies he could try and put in place to add additional um, sound barriers or sound deadening materials to the outside of the building to help try and work with the town and get this under control. So that's the update that I have. Any questions on that?
So could I just fill in a couple of things? I am, I think what's important is that, um, they are currently in compliance in talking with the police department that the noise ordinance has two elements. One is the elements of decimals, and the other is the, um, element of disorderly noise. Um, and at the, um, property line, um, Ed, having been trained in the ordinance, um, reports that it is not, um, it would not trip the disorderly noise. Having said that, he can hear noise. Um, and that is why we are working with Costa, even though he's currently compliant. The other thing we know is our experience with this business owner is that when he says he's going to do things, he usually follows through. Um, well, all he has a pattern of following through. Um, so this is a situation that I think staff feels very comfortable recommending approval of the license with the understanding that the owner is going to try to address the complaints, even though he's not um, in violation of the ordinance.
Thank you. There any comments from council?
Yep. Chief Merrill, thank you so much for the work to follow up on the complaints and work with the business owner, and Pat, thank you for that. Uh, has there been any uh, follow up with the resident and father complaints in terms of letting know what the type of work that's going on, that the town has heard their concerns?
Yep, through, I'm using Ed to kind of be the conduit to who's responsive to the residents, right? So if they email me, I'm working with Ed and Pat and all of us, and we've been in pretty constant contact with them through email. It's the best form of communication for them. Um, letting them know what the process has been and that we've been walking down this path. Um, so like I said, the complaint started coming in in September, when we'd expect the business to get busy, right? When the students come back. Um, so we've been walking down this path. We've been taking in noise complaints, as I usually do every Monday morning when I come back in. I go back through the reports, and I see that we had a noise complaint or something from somebody in that area, I'd follow up with Ed and be like, hey, can we try and figure out what it was, or I'll try and talk to patrol and say, hey, what were you seeing? Was there something different this night? Um, was it a, you know, abnormally large crowd? Was there something special going on? And kind of trying to get a feel for what's actually going on, because I'm not working all the time, right? Um, and so again, as Sophie said, this is based off all that feedback that I've been getting from the members all across the board. But to answer your question specifically, yes, through email, we've been staying in touch with them.
And that, what do you, when you say complaints plural, I mean, is it every weekend, or is it?
So since I went back and looked, from what I can find since twenty twenty-one, I found nine complaints. Six of those nine have come since September from the same residents that we're talking about. Um, so to answer your question, and we did, I even had Ed did go above and beyond a little bit too, or tried to see how widespread this might be. I know he went out and spoke to some other residents in this area to try and find out. And the feedback that I got from him was it wasn't a rampant problem where everybody feels like this is a a big major issue. So that's why it took a little bit longer, took us until November to get a reading. We were trying to make sure that it was accurate too and reflective, right? I didn't want to do it at some point when, you know, there's no activity going on. A weekend when they're closed or something like that, or a weekend when it might be especially high during Halloween weekend or something like that. So when we did the meter reading, we wanted to make sure that it was as close as we could replicate to what the ordinance recommends. So that's what we did.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from council?
No, just thank you for your diligence following up on that.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this public hearing? Okay.
No hands raised.
Public hearing A, thank you. Move to public hearing B. Proposed revisions to the Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, section eighteen dash thirty-one, eighteen dash one zero six, and eighteen dash one three two, eighteen dash one three eight, as well as adding eighteen dash one five five. These ordinance changes are proposed to comply with state of Maine law enacted in twenty twenty-two by virtue of the passage of LD two thousand and three. This is Sophie.
So I am so pleased to introduce council to Isabel Exley, who, um, is our contract planner, and she got to work with the planning board, uh, last month. And, um, she is going to take this, so I don't have to do it. So you'll get a much better report.
Thank you, Isabel.
Yeah, thank you all for having me. Um, I do have a presentation, um, prepared. You might have already seen this. Um, it's similar to something that the previous town planner might have shared with at least some of you. Um, so as was mentioned, this is, um, the amendments that are before you are intended to comply with the state law that was, um, passed in April of twenty twenty-two. It had an original implementation date of July one of this year, but a variety of municipalities faced issues, sort of understanding important details, um, and the state's rulemaking on this came later than expected. So in June of this year, um, they extended the implementation date of the law for municipalities to January of twenty twenty-four and made some small clarifications. They also issued, um, maybe a fifteen-page rulemaking document that provided a lot of clarity to questions that they were receiving from the folks, uh, working on the ground with the municipalities. Um, in general, the purpose of the law was to remove regulatory barriers to increase housing production and opportunities across the state. Um, the law proposed to do this in three ways, which sort of by making municipalities, um, amend their existing ordinances. So they, uh, wanted to allow multiple dwelling units on a single lot, essentially getting rid of single-family only zoning. They also wanted to make accessory dwelling units, um, sometimes called granny flats or, um, in-law apartments allowable anywhere residential uses are allowed. And then they also create a density bonus for certain affordable housing developments, and I'll kind of get into all of these details. So in terms of the multiple dwellings on one lot, the primary purpose of this section, uh, like I mentioned, is to get rid of single-family, um, zoning. It gives property owners more flexibility on their lots potentially. Um, so it essentially makes duplexes allowable in any residential area. You can also place up to, um, four detached dwellings if you have a large enough lot. Um, and where it previously would have required, you know, creating multiple lots, going through a subdivision review process, building a road. Um, it, uh, sort of removes some of those requirements in certain areas. Uh, this part of the law, I should mention, does not change what land uses a municipality allows in a certain zoning district. Or nor does it change a municipality's density requirements. So for instance, even though, um, three or four units might be allowed on a lot in your, uh, MDR zone, the units would not be allowed in the form of a multifamily apartment building. They would need to be actually separate units because of, um, the land use requirements. So in our zoning ordinance and in most zoning ordinances, you'll have your land use requirements and your density requirements. Uh, the uses are sort of the first thing that we'll evaluate, and that would be, you know, what is actually allowed. Um, a multifamily structure is usually an apartment building. You sometimes have uses like townhomes, and that's regulating building form, and then your density requirements are actually talking about the number of allowed units. So it's sort of an interesting distinction, but one that you should be aware of. Um, and then, uh, in this, this is sort of how the law goes about doing that. So, um, if there's no existing dwelling on a lot, and the lot is not located in a growth area, which Orno's growth area is the MDR, the HDR, the Village Commercial, and the C two zoning districts. Um, if there's no existing dwelling, and it's not within any of those districts that I just referenced, you are allowed up to a duplex on that property. Uh, just so you know, that was already what Orno allowed, um, so there was no change required there to comply with the state law. Um, and then if there's no existing dwelling, that the property is in one of those zoning districts that I mentioned, you are allowed up to four units. But in the zones that don't allow multifamily housing as a use, you can only do this in either four single-family buildings or two two-family buildings. Um, and we added some new provisions in ordinance changes that are in front of you, um, to allow for those multiple principal structures on a single lot and would obviously require proper access to all structures, um, in the form of a driveway, usually a shared driveway getting to all of those. And then, um, if there is one existing dwelling on a lot, and you are, um, either in or out of the growth area, it's up to three units allowed. So you can add one attached unit, um, so create a duplex of the, out of the existing building, uh, and one deep, up to one detached unit, which would essentially result in duplex building and a separate single-family dwelling all on the same lot. Um, we added a provision to, again, allow multiple principal structures on a single lot, which was not something that your ordinance previously allowed. Um, but now would be a change needed to comply with state law. So I mentioned at the beginning, the initial reading of LD two thousand and three had some ambiguity in terms of whether or not minimum lot area scaled with each unit. Clarification was provided from the state, um, during the rulemaking process that each unit actually needs to meet the minimum lot area requirement. So for example, in Orno's MDR district, uh, the minimum lot area per dwelling requirement is fifteen thousand square feet. So if I'm just doing a single-family home, uh, I would need fifteen thousand square feet of lot area to be legal. If I was doing two single-family homes, but on one lot, I would need thirty thousand square feet of lot area to be legal. Um, and with three, you know, forty-five thousand square feet or just over an acre to actually comply. Um, the law also, um, allows ADUs anywhere that single-family homes are allowed. Your ordinance actually already did this, um, and, you know, there were some additional restrictions around ADUs in your ordinance, some of which had to be changed as a result of the law. Um, so while we are allowed to keep the existing owner occupancy requirement, um, for conversations with the state, what we did have to change in this section was to remove the minimum lot size requirement for an ADU. So essentially, a lot, as long as a single-family home is already present, and the ADU wouldn't make the law more non-conforming, as in the ADU would actually meet setback requirements, it would be allowed. Um, the law also doesn't allow to, uh, a municipality to have further minimum parking requirements for ADUs, um, than what is typically required of single-family homes. So we had to change that provision as well. And then finally, this, this part, um, you're really only gonna see when there is larger developments proposed. But this part of the law provides a density bonus for housing development, um, that would meet the threshold to be considered affordable. And I'll go into those definitions in a minute. These types of developments are only allowed in the growth area where multifamily dwelling as a use is allowed. So that's the Village Commercial, uh, the C two and the HDR zoning districts. Um, the law applies a density bonus. So essentially, you're allowed to do two-point-five times the normal number of units allowed in the zoning district in question. Um, but this does not apply on top of any existing density bonus for things like cluster development projects, which is already something that's allowed in your ordinance. And then from our review process, this would, you know, end up looking similar to how the town looks at cluster development applications um, with the incentive density bonus only applicable if, um, certain conditions are met, namely that the units will be considered affordable for at least thirty years with covenants on them to ensure long-term affordability. Um, and then just for your knowledge, um, affordable, when we say that in the housing world, that means for rental housing, a development in which a household whose income does not exceed eighty percent of the area median income can afford a majority of the units that the developer designates as affordable without spending more than thirty percent of the household's monthly income on housing and housing-related costs. So rent utilities, um, if they charge for a parking spot, things like that. For owned housing, um, the threshold is similar, but it's a development in which a household whose income does not exceed one hundred twenty percent of the median income for an area, um, can afford without spending more than thirty percent of the household's monthly income on housing costs and utilities and that. Um, I think that's the extent of the presentation, yeah. And, um, I am available to answer any questions, uh, around either the ordinance changes that are in front of you or the state law process that kind of has led up to this point. Uh, also, for your knowledge, the planning board reviewed and held a notice public hearing on this on September twentieth. Um, at that point, no members of the public spoke. Um, they ended up forwarding after discussion a positive recommendation for approval on this to you all. Um, noting that, uh, it will essentially build on the town's existing comprehensive plan. And I would just add as a caveat that, uh, this, um, state law that I keep referencing will actually pre- preempt municipal home rule authority on this. So, you know, even if, um, it doesn't, uh, get adopted as drafted, uh, it will go into effect starting January one. So, um, but again, any questions, I'm happy to answer, uh, either about the ordinance itself or state law.
Thank you. Any questions for Isabel?
I don't, um, so it kind of doesn't matter, it's happening anyway, but this is nice that we get to play this game like we're doing something. So, um, I do have a question about the, the language. Um, on this, page four, the second from the last paragraph, um, talks about, um, being owner, um, owner occupied. And I wonder if that's our language, because it sets a pretty high bar for being owner occupied. Um, and we're gonna talk about voting later, uh, which is the, which is kind of the opposite, I think, but, um, this says, so the, the scenario that comes to mind, it says you can, you can have an accessory dwelling unit if you're, only if you're owner occupied. And I could see somebody living in Florida for part, part of the year, keeping their home. Maybe they end up getting a Florida license, maybe they registered their car in Florida, and that would not allow them, per this wording, to have a, be able to keep a, um, ADS. Uh, accessory dwelling unit.
Yep. So, um, that is not in the law, that is longstanding, um, town policy. And I think that comes from not wanting to create de facto duplexes in the MDR. Um, I think we've got some counselors here who went through that. Um, I was not here when that was debated. Um, that's how longstanding it is, very longstanding. Um, I think that, um, the, when council has gone through this ordinance revision, the direction that staff has taken was keep everything similar to what it was and simply make changes. I think you'd have a problem, or we'd really need to look to the town attorney for some guidance, because if you look in the comprehensive plan, it talked about being very careful and was very directive around, um, rental units kind of overtaking historical single-family, um, neighborhoods. And we have not looked specifically, that question hasn't come up, so we haven't specifically vetted that. Um, but if this might be a really good topic, um, Counselor Kenny, to add to your list of things you'd like the comprehensive plan committee to look at and evaluate, because I think it harkens back to many, many years ago when there were huge house parties, and, um, then even conflicts that we had five and six years ago. Well, no, it would have been thirteen, fourteen, fifteen with, um, neighborhood conflicts. So, um, I, I would just be afraid to tell you that you could absolutely change that now. I'm not sure that that would align with a comprehensive plan. But if it was really important to the council, I'm sure Isabel would love to talk with the town attorney to figure that out.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
I, I have a quick question, maybe just for a point of information. How often are the, um, median income rates quantified to, for our affordable housing levels?
Um, so typically what you're, um, sort of deferring to is main, uh, the main state housing authority. And I believe, uh, at least from what I can find on their website, that they are updating those every year. So this was last updated in May of this year.
Great. Thank you. Any other council comments or questions? Do we have any public comment or, Jeff, please come do it.
Yeah, I'm curious how an assessor is gonna view this. If we put two single-family houses on one lot, how is that gonna be assessed at the same value as if they were on two separate lots, or?
Um, no, um, we actually have that already occurring in Orno, where people have two, two homes on one lot. Lots are given, um, uh, land value, which would, um, equate to your developed area. So, um, you're gonna have, um, your developed lot, which would be your first fifteen thousand per unit. Um, well, actually, maybe the answer is yes, Jeff. Um, two, you'd have two developed lots, and then you would have land. So your land value and then your two buildings, if there are two separate units, would get two separate property cards, um, for those buildings. So the answer, I'm gonna reverse myself. The answer is yes. Um, the assessor, you would see, um, a increase in value because, um, you have two developed lots, and this is where Isabel has to correct the town manager.
Would the assessed value be the same as two, two houses on separate lots?
It's only gonna be one lot, though, right?
Right, I know it's one lot, but.
But it would be two.
Right, so you would essentially be having, um, well, it sort of depends on the, how you set up, um, the association. Presumably, you would be doing something like a, um, condominium association, where the base lot would be assessed at one value, and then each of the properties on that lot would be assessed as full, um, properties to the building owner. Um, so it, it, it work, would work similar to any existing condominium projects that you have in the community. Um, essentially.
There you go. And i- if you need more detail, you can come, you can ask me, and I'll pull property cards and show you. How's that? We have a couple of that very same situation, one lot, one owner, two homes on them, on the lot. So let me just pull those, and I'll send them to you.
Thank you. Any other comment on this public hearing? Right. Thank you, Isabel. So seeing none, we'll close public hearing B. Move on to public hearing C. Proposed revisions to Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-nine, article three, regarding the renewal process for marijuana establishment business licenses.
That is me. Um, just trying to pull it up real fast. Um, if council and the community would recall, um, earlier this year, we had a situation where, um, our single retail marijuana establishment needed to renew its business license. Um, it kind of lost track of time. And, um, when we went to the ordinance to see whether or not it really needed, um, a public hearing, it was not clear. And the, uh, town attorney advised us at that point that we needed to revise the And the uh town attorney advised us at that point that we needed to revise the the um. Ordinance. We um at that point, um, council committee talked about this and decided that. They really wanted um marijuana licenses to follow the same process that. Um, people who serve alcohol or um have vitulers have, which is every year. They have to have a public hearing. So we're making a very simple change to section twenty-nine forty-one. Um, where we are saying that the initial application and all subsequent renewal applications for. Marijuana establishment licenses shall be received and processed by the town clerk. At least fourteen days prior to the next scheduled public hearing date. So the other thing that we cleaned up with this is making it clear. That our town clerk would get. The application for renewal at least fourteen days before the next scheduled public hearing so that we weren't chasing this. Um, the town um charter wants us to publish things ten days in advance. And we need more than ten days to have notice, even though everything we publish now goes in the Bangor Daily News. Which on the one hand is much more expensive, but on the other hand, gives us a great deal more flexibility. Um, she's Shelley still needs the fourteen days to make sure that we get those um public hearing notices in.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? No, no. Any questions from the public? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing C. Open public hearing D, calling a March fifth, twenty twenty-four municipal referendum election for voter consideration of proposed amendments. To the Orno Town Charter, Section one point one point nine nominations and elections referendum. Moving the annual municipal election from the second Tuesday of March or within thirty days of said date to coincide with the called state or federal election. To the first Tuesday of November or within thirty days of said date to coincide with the called state or federal election. Sophie.
Um, yep, this was actually um a charter amendment that was proposed by counselors. Uh, we've spent considerable amount of time in committee um. Thinking about this, talking about this. Um, and at the end of the day, the um. Change in language is very simple. It is changing it from um. March to November um and leaving pretty much everything else the same. Um, I think the piece that would be important for people to s- to understand is that changing this. Um, election would move our local elections from council chamber where they're currently held. To the University of Maine, um, because that is the place that the um Secretary of State has approved for November elections. Um, the other piece that would be important for people to understand. Is the nomination period. So we're getting ready to put nomination papers out for our March. Election and um. The way that um. The November election would fall. We would be looking at putting out nomination papers the end of July. Um, with them due back by right around the first week of September, depending upon how the days fall. Um, that's statutory. Um, and then the last thing that I think people would want to know about this change. Is that annual elections happen once a year, which means that. Um, and the charter can only be changed at an annual election. So that means for two thousand twenty-four, your election would happen in March. Your two thousand twenty-five election would happen in November of next year, so of twenty-five. So that means that until you get to a point where everybody on council. Is um. Being elected at the same uh ha- is getting elected in November, you're gonna have people who are serving eighteen month terms. Um, until you work through that cycle. So essentially, it will be three years. And everybody who gets elected. Up until. And through the twenty-four this March, everybody would serve an eighteen month term. And then. In twenty. Five, you would start to go back to. Not eighteen months, it would be thirty-six plus six, forty-two months. Um. And then when you go back to twenty-five, you'll go back to a regular three-year term. Um, talking with the town attorney, that is, that does not require any language in the charter. Um, a- as part of this change because our charter is very clear that. Um, counselors serve for a fixed term or until their successor is seated. So if we're not seating a successor, that counselor is still. Uh, authorized to sit there, to sit in the seat. So I don't know if you have, um, the other question that I finally got an answer to last week was around the school election. Um, the school election can be separate. Um, so it can run at separate times. Um, the issue with that is you are doubling up. Um, nomination periods for staff to to work through. Um, but um, the annual election date, so. When that, the annual election date becomes very important with. The RSU director position, because if somebody leaves in the middle of a term. The council appoints somebody to serve until the next annual election. And in that case, according to the town attorney, the next annual election would be the next regular election for the school. Committee. So, for example, based on what I heard, the school committee liked the idea of perhaps seating people in. Or having an election in June. So, according to the town attorney, the the. Um, you could change this language to say. We want um the school to go to have their annual election in June and the town to have its annual election. In November and um. Run two separate elections. But again, you're doubling Shelley's election work for the local election. But you asked the question.
Thank you. Comment from council.
So just to clarify. Because I apologize, I was trying to get online and couldn't get online, but you so the school could, they could run a completely separate election.
Well, you would be, it's the town's responsibility to establish when that's gonna be. The town would still have to run the election, run the nomination process. But the question that was posed to me that I was asked to get legal advice for, when the. School came in and wanted was more interested in a June change to June as opposed to a change to November. Was if we could separate those two dates and have. The school directors have one election and the town have another one, and legally you can do that. I am also suggesting that. Again, it creates sig. It it creates significant work for our town clerk to do that. But you asked me if it was legal.
Has the school been notified of that since we got that information?
No, I just got the information.
I just, I mean, I'm curious in how important it is to them. They came and they put out some ideas, but I'm not really sure that it's that important to them. So for me. Personally, I'm interested in one of us reaching out to the schools about that.
So my conversations with the school board chair was that, you know, they came to our meeting at our invitation with the superintendent and provided. Feedback from their conversations. They have not taken a formal position that they would like put in writing. I mean, if they really have a hard and fast position that they want us to carry into this discussion. I think, you know, I think the ask should be something in writing from them. If they're gonna endorse a June election for school board members, I would be. That's a hundred and eighty degrees away from where I would like to go with this because only one percent of electoral voters vote in June. As opposed to the six percent that vote in March and the forty to sixty percent that. Um, not to testify as part of a public hearing, but I would not want to go in that direction um as a. As a discussion, but I'd be open to a letter if they wanted to send us one, but I didn't hear from them in my follow-up that they were committed to a June. Let us let us get elected in June.
So I I'll, I just want to speak again. I spoke when we when we've discussed this. I I am. Opposed to sending this out um to to vote in March. Uh, I do think it it. Runs the risk of marginalizing our our local voting community. Not just physically by moving it to the campus, but um. It also marginalizes the voice of engaged voters. For the mere fact and and. It's not just about university students, um, as Dan just said, so we we. Pick a year, twenty twenty presidential election, we had five hundred and fifty people vote in March. We had fifty-five hundred vote in November. And I haven't heard, I guess, from this council, what do we believe? Is stopping those five thousand people that didn't vote in March? What is stopping them from voting? In March, they showed up to vote in in November and and I. I believe it's whether it's disengagement or whether it's student voters, I I don't know which is probably some co- is a combination of both. Uh, but when when we have that that that's the trend. We've got an additional four or five thousand people voting because they're engaged in the national election. And that will simply dwarf any local elections where we have five hundred people voting and. And you know, I I think that's a skewed version of democracy, to be honest, that that we're gonna say, oh, well, we look how much better we're doing when we've got five thousand voters. But those same, those same people have the opportunity to vote. There's thirty days to vote up until. Uh, voting day in March, so um, I'm I'm not in favor of of putting this out uh to vote. And again, I'm very interested to hear from council what it is they believe is holding back the five, the currently the five thousand or so, four thousand, given the year. People from showing up in March to vote.
We're not debating this now, right? We're gonna have a public hearing so that the public can talk to us and we'll debate it when we vote on it.
That's right. We'll have another opportunity as a council to to talk about the the order itself.
Eventually, I'm gonna learn the process and how this council functions, don't worry. It's only a year, it's only a year and a half in, so.
I'll get back to you on your questions, though.
Me too.
Uh, is there any other uh comment from council? Is there any comment from the public on this item?
I'm I'm Frederica Smith, a resident of Orono, and. I urge the council to reconsider this also. If the. Election should be switched, I recom- I would strongly urge you to consider switching it to June. I think the combination of the school action. And the town election might draw greater participation to address one of the comments that councillor Kenny just made. The annual, I have three points. The town's annual budget cycle starts in July first. And so electing councillors in June then gives them an additional five months compared to November to learn about the operations. Very complicated operations of the town and have much more insight into that before the next budget cycle comes up. Um, second. I feel strongly that a town election in November would get lost in all of the commotion that's associated with the state and national. Elections. Excuse me. And it isn't fair to those who are running for council. Nor to the people who are extremely busy in the fall, trying to figure out. What councillor positions are and so on. Um, so having them run in June when it's a more um. Relaxed situation. It's after the primaries, so on, for most states. So there isn't as much national hullabaloo when that has an effect. And third, in terms of participation. It's very easy to vote absentee. So if the concern is that people would have difficulty voting in June because they're. Out of town or if we're talking about students who aren't living here year round, many of them do now, but if they're not. They can vote absentee. The information on the count candidates is on the town's website. It's in the newspaper. There's plenty of information, plenty of opportunity to vote. Moving it to November does not change that opportunity at all. So I would urge you to look again at the question of if it needs to be switched. Doing so to June and rather than November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Brendan Traxel. I'm a resident of Orono, staff member at the University of Maine, but I'm just here for myself today. Um, I would just like to speak to you all, saying that I'm very much in favor of generally just consolidating elections, but especially so. Um, to a November date. Um, currently, I'm I'm of the belief that having multiple elections every single year. Is quite frankly. Not a waste of time, but it's a time that could be better utilized both by staff who are running the backside of the elections, but also voters who are taking time to travel to the town office. Travel to campus if it's a November election. Um. Because I was here in the audience uh when uh the committee was discussing this uh previously. Um, I know there's a lot of discussion about enfr- enfranchisement um of students because it is during their spring break. Um, and I do absolutely agree with that point, but I think even at the broader level. Um, for all voters in Orono, um, it'd be better worth their time if they could just do it once a year. You know, I'm a very active, very. Excited voter. I get out every time I can, but not everyone is like that. A lot of people see it as just doing their taxes essentially, and. I'm sure no one here wants to do their taxes multiple times a year. Um, and so kind of seeing that mindset and thinking about accessibility and ease of voting. Um, I've encouraged this council to bring this issue to voters. Thank you. Thanks.
Hello, uh, my name is Darren Martone and uh I'm a student at the University of Maine. Uh. And uh, I feel that moving the elections to November, just like ripping off a Band-Aid, you get it all done at the same time. Um, it's uh. Yeah, um, it's very asinine that not only is uh the federal elections not a state holiday, I mean, a federal holiday. So people uh like students and people who work at the university already have to make a time out of their day to go out and vote. But having um. Uh, like uh, having local elections in March just doesn't feel like. It can accommodate for people who have that time constriction. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any cut? Yes, Tom.
Hi, Tom Perry, uh, Bennet Road, Norano. I I applaud the council's desire to increase voter participation. Um, I do have some concerns and many of them were expressed by Frederica. That local elections are gonna get lost with state and national election. But I also, I I've been reading the Bangor Daily News pretty carefully since the since the recent November election. And as you know, Brewer and Bangor and Old Town and Ellsworth, and I'm sure some other local communities. Have their council and school committee votes in November. And one of the things that concerns me is you hear a lot more about partisan voting. Um, you hear candidates for council referred to as Republicans and Democrats. You hear candidates for council referred to as progressives and conservatives. And that really does bother me. I I think we have had a long tradition of nonpartisan. Um, voting for council and school committee, and I'm afraid we might lose that in November elections. The other thing that I I just add from the comments I've heard already tonight, I I would. Be strongly opposed to separating the school committee and council elections. I don't think that makes any sense at all. Um, I think they should be elected at the same time, whenever it is, whether it's March or June or November. I think Frederica made a a good observation that you really might want to consider the the June possibility for elections.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in council chambers who'd like to speak? Do we have anyone online?
No hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close this item? Okay. Seeing none, let's close public hearing D, close all public hearings. Moving on to acknowledgements by council members. I think last time we started at this end, so let's start at this end.
Okay, thanks. Um, I wanted to acknowledge the staff.
Okay, thanks. Um, I wanted to acknowledge the staff for the terrific trunk and treat event. I got to go this year. I've never gotten to go before. I did not get candy, but many people tried to ask me for it because I had it back. It was a terrific event. Megan did a great job. All of the staff did a great job. Mitch did a great job. So big shout out there. And I think I can hold anything else I have about the potluck thanks to later. And it's also World Kindness Day today. So I wanted to put that out that today is World Kindness Day.
Thank you. Sonia.
All right, I've got two. Um, the first is a thank you to Rob and his public works staff. My neighbor, I know, sent an email about weeds on the roundabout because she CC'd me on it. And then I saw that the next day the weeds were weed whacked, and um, I really appreciated that responsiveness to my neighbor. I know it made a big difference to her. She mentioned it to me. Um, and then also to Shelley for a tremendous election success in a new venue. I was really happy to get to see the new setup. Thanks.
Well, I was gonna, I am probably still gonna ask for this to be pulled out of the consent, I think, but I do want to acknowledge 40 years' worth of service to this community. Chris Brew is, we're gonna, he's on, he's on the agenda tonight, but I think, again, I think it's in consent. I'd like to pull it out just to acknowledge it again. I am curious, do we have anyone that's beyond that?
Currently, Chris Laurie is close, but not that close, right? Two years, yes. So Chris is our longest tenured.
Pretty amazing, so.
I think people are talking back there, which I think Chris is the longest tenured and um, we are looking forward to um, celebrating with him.
Amazing. So I want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge that we're politely saving one for the chair of the uh, the council. But we worked on that together, but not, but um, I wanted to thank Megan Hass, the team at Public Works for supporting our, the pet, the invasive pest management day we had at the, in the basin at the Union Street Boat Launch. A community group has come together in the basin to help us, to help think through and imagine what could be done with that space, and that involved, um, it started with a, an email that, it started from last year's cleanup day. A cleanup day earlier in the year, it led to an email to us and the and the town manager. And then we had this event, and we've had committee meetings at OVC and in the community. Many councillors attended, talking about what we could do there, and I really think it's a good example of what the type of activity neighborhoods can can do in our community and what we can do to support them. So, thank you.
Well, I was going to also acknowledge and thank what a great um, election on our uh, on um, the referendums and the new space and how smooth it went, and I really appreciate that, and so I can second that. And also, I just want to say thanks, Jeff, for um, stepping up for all of us here in council.
My pleasure. I have, I have two acknowledgements. I really, oh, Matt, that's, I oh, Matt just went, I'm sorry. Right, yeah, Rob is online. I'm sorry, Rob. Without an image in front of my face, I missed it.
All right. Excuse me, I have a bit of a sore throat this evening. It's why I'm not there to not to give it to you all, but um, I'd like to acknowledge Rob Yerkes and the rest of Public Works. Just, I've been really pleased with the work that we've seen from them recently on the asset management plan that's being developed to help us plan long term for all, you know, taking care of all of our assets across town of many different types, and that it can, it sounds a little policy wonkish, but I think it's uh, it's really important work that um, might otherwise not get noticed. Um, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you. And and I also have two acknowledgements. One, I want to thank my fellow councillors for letting me say this, but after 29 years, the Orono High School football team is now state champions once again. I have to say, uh, there is incredibly dedicated staff of coaches there, some wonderful kids, and I got to cook some hamburgers, so it was awesome. It was a great season. So thank you for that. Um, I also want to acknowledge the passing of a uh, pillar of our community, a longtime community mentor to many people who have worked with him and for him, uh, the recent passing of Bruce Farnsworth is gonna leave a hole in our community, and um, I appreciate uh, all the work he has done and the the commentary he's offered us over the years, and we'll miss him. Thank you.
Can we just also add that the the girls won uh, across the country, um, state championship as well, and it's, it's fun to do the the rallies back to town down Main Street. Those are a lot of fun. I appreciate the police and fire coming out and and leading those. Those are a lot of fun, and I never see traffic slower on Main Street than when the buses are coming back with our champions, and I like it very much.
That's awesome. Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, uh, I don't believe we have any unfinished business, Sophie. So let's move to the consent agenda. Take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Can we, can I uh, ask that we pull off 23207 and 23208?
Yes. So we'll move those to new business. Let me make a note real quick so I don't miss it. Uh, and those will be, do they stay the same number, Shelley, or do they get a new, okay? Do we do them at the end, however? Okay, we'll do them first.
We do those at the very beginning of new business.
So with those amendments, could we move to accept the consent?
Move acceptance of the consent agenda with those exceptions.
Move in a second. All those in favor?
We need a roll call vote.
Oh, Matt, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes, I agree.
Councillor Demaret.
Approved.
Councillor Kenny.
Approved.
Councillor Laraway.
In favor.
Councillor Berthell.
In favor.
Councillor Marks.
Favor.
And Councillor Windard.
In favor. And the consent agenda with those two items removed passes unanimously. So let's take up new business, beginning with order 23-207, order setting the date of December 11th, 2023 at 5:00 PM for a public hearing to consider a town of Orono making a formal pledge of up to $2.6 million to the Orono Public Library Foundation's capital campaign for the physical expansion of the Orono Public Library. We'll need a motion in a second to begin discussing this.
So moved.
Second.
So before we begin, is this something that you need staff background on, or is it something that you just wish to discuss?
Um, nope, it's, I don't think I need staff background. I wanted it, I wanted it pulled off separated. Frankly, because I I would like to see this go to a public vote rather than council make the decision to on this, so that's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to pull it off. Is that a correct procedure? I probably screwed, messed the procedure up again. And so I wanted to vote it individually on it. That was the purpose of taking it off.
So um, you can pull anything off to vote individually on it. That is perfectly fine. And what I heard you say, just to make sure I understand, because you're a little low over there, which is unusual for me to have a hard time hearing you. But um, the um, you are suggesting that you want to send this to referendum?
It's why I won't be voting in favor of it, because I'd like to see it go to referendum. I understand that's not, I don't think I can make that change. I guess I don't understand. I don't think I can make that change.
So if you look at Robert's rules, um, and I'm gonna ask the town clerk to listen carefully and help me here, because I was not expecting this, so um, I think as part of Robert's rules, it could still, you're, this is simply setting the date for a public hearing of December 11th. For a local referendum, I think, Shelley, that we would be within the window if you wanted to try to send this to public, um, to referendum now. My concern is it would be going in a vacuum, and there are five other projects that we were looking at. So you would be looking at sending this to referendum at the earliest in March at this point. And what we might end up doing is if that's the direction council wants to go in, we probably would ask you to set to direct staff to set the date, because it might end up being the 27th of November to get the public hearing to put it on the referendum ballot. I'm not gonna ask Shelley to do the timeline quickly, but um, the answer is I think it still can go. It's just a matter of the deadline, and I can't remember if it was June 4th or December, I'm sorry, January 4th or December 4th, when we did the math, Shelley. I am showing that it would be December 11th. Oh, so, so we could do it that same night if you wanted to. So I want to be very clear. I am not making recommendations as to what you do. I am simply telling you what options are available to you with this.
And and just to be clear, since I obviously am still not quite sure how we function here as a council, only a year and a half in, um, that I wanted it pulled off because I'm, I'm not in support of it because I think it needs to go to referendum, but the point you just made is also a very concerning point for me with this request, and that we have $16 million worth of other potential needs that we are and we're, we're looking at, we are looking at this in a vacuum, and that is, again, a major concern for me, so that I I don't believe, based on previous discussion, that there's appetite on this council to to move it to um, vote, okay, but if if there is, then by all means.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I do, so I am supportive of making a pledge to the library because it is personally my sort of number one commitment of the various infrastructure projects we have ahead of us. And also, I actually really love the idea of all of the priorities that we have as a town going out to referendum and soliciting voter input on them in that way, and I think that that would either that or some, you know, really intentional surveys at the very least that could give us more you know, really substantive community input as we try to make some really challenging decisions about a number of high dollar um, investments that we'd be looking toward in the future would be incredibly valuable. So I um, you know, in the interest of time tonight, knowing that this is probably not the best space to take a lot of time on this, would propose that we um, put this soon uh, as an agenda workshop discussion to really better look at the information that we have to date and timeline at which we'll get more information and can start to be looking at this holistic package, because I do think it's a really important point, Leo, and I appreciate you kind of slicing it off for for us to flag for discussion.
Can I speak a little bit to timeline as well? Um, I think the last time we came here, what was it, two or three weeks ago? And James um, spoke to the project, um, talking about the grant that we would be getting through the federal government. That actually shrinks, you know, whatever you choose, if you choose to send it to referendum, March would be preferable rather than waiting till November, but waiting till March even shrinks our time to do the additional fundraising by not, by two months. So we're looking at a 16-month fundraising campaign to raise whatever we need to raise, and you know, maybe if it fails in referendum, we're looking at raising over uh, $3 million, which we've done some work previously to find that this community doesn't, cannot support that in private funding. So um, keeping that in mind, I I appreciate, you know, your concerns, Leo, but I I think that that's something you need to also take into consideration, our timeline. We we've, the foundation has secured $3.6 million through the federal government, but it needs to be matched in some way. So and in order to move on with fundraising, we need this third number to know what what we have and what we need to raise.
Can I, just just specifically to that, to that point, um, it doesn't I'm not sure um, why you, why you would have to wait. If, I mean, the number is, if it's 7.2 and you're getting 3.6, the number is 3.6. That's a number you can start fundraising on, I think, technically, and then, and then depending on if it's voted in, and then, you know, so that number shrinks.
So I wish our consultant was here.
What's that?
I wish our fundraising consultant was here, but in the work that she does, her recommendation um, is that we have in order to go out and fundraise, you can't just say, well, we might need a million, we might need three. To really get secure funding from individuals and um, as well as foundations, you need a firm number to be saying what what it is you're looking for. So I I hear what you're saying, and I think that we have foundation members who are chomping at the bit to just, let's go fundraise, you know, let's get it done. But in order, a more successful campaign is going to be having the, knowing what you're you're looking for, how much you're looking for.
So.
Can I, can I just ask, because I did ask during that presentation, I did, I don't think I got a clear answer. We've got 3.6 coming from a federal grant that has to be matched in some capacity. We, but it wasn't clear if it was dollar per dollar.
It's 45%, so um, 3, 3.6 is 55% of the, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me to give you the numbers, but the 3.6 is 55% of the project. So what we are looking for is 45%.
What do you have to do to get to 3.6?
Well, I believe we need to raise the rest.
I think, Leo, one answer that I I got, um, I may not have had time to share it with you, is that part of the town's contribution can be in-kind contribution, so it's not just the dollars that the town gives, it's the value of the service the town also devotes to the project, so that may defray some of the ultimate, the cost of the town pays.
That's helpful additional info.
What's, I I'm still really trying to understand. Do you understand, Sarah?
Well, I think I have the same question. Um, so what would happen if the fundraising amount was not at the 45%? If it came in lower, would you then receive 3.2 million from the federal funds, or would you receive nothing? That, that's, that's my question that I've got.
And I don't have an answer to that. That is part, that has been part of our work, putting together questions for USDA. So my understanding is before we can ask all those questions and start working with USDA on this grant, it needs to be approved first. So we're waiting for the federal government um, to approve this so that we can then start really working with USDA to figure out what it is, if there's matching as part of it, or if it needs to be actual cash. We're not 100% sure, but we certainly could start digging a little bit more.
So.
Is the grant? I, my understanding is the grant is approved, it's just waiting for budget to be approved. Is that accurate?
It is true.
So presumably, there's, there are rules associated with it, with the grant that we could find out.
So a couple of things. First, this is not a town of Orono grant. So the foundation would have to be the one to find out what its rules are. The second thing I will just say is I started out pretty close to where the council is right now with the foundation, when we started these conversations months ago of, well, you tell me what you need, and that's what we'll put in front of council. How much do you really need us to have? And um, trying to make that number as small as I could for the um, tax funded portion of this project. Laurie is being very kind, but uh, the reason that they came to us and asked for $2.6 million is because they believe that they can, through grants and other things, raise $4.6 million. When we look at the addition that has been suggested, based on needs, based on surveys of the community, based on focus groups within the community about library and the needs that our very well-trained library directors telling us are not met with the current library structure, the 7.2 million is taking what was about an $8 million, $9 million initial design and value engineering it down to the level that we think we can get. So I get where council is coming from in terms of being concerned, given the totality. It concerns me a little bit that without discussion of the other projects, we're deciding what has priority over other things, because there's one project that's got $30 million of match to. But it's not my place to tell you how to do what you do, but the idea that this is kind of just sprung here is a little bit concerning to me.
You're here, sorry, sorry. Can I go, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah. Hard to, we're all wearing blue shirts down here, so maybe it's hard to I don't think Leo is speaking for all of us. I don't think Leo is speaking for all of us on this. We had um, at our meeting with the library foundation, they came in on on October twenty third. Um, the one oh eight minute mark of the of the video, we talked about moving this forward to a public hearing. We talked about even expediting, trying to use some of our special committee meetings to call a public hearing so we could get to this meeting and have a vote for the pledge today. We were asked by there's, this room was packed. It was the biggest crowd I've seen and I feel like if I'd known we were going to have this conversation, I would have urged that same group to come back today and be a part of this conversation. I think we should proceed with the public hearing on December eleventh. If there's a will of this council and the public at that meeting to decide to put this out to referendum, that's what we should do. But I don't think I'm going to vote against it going out to referendum. I think we had a, I think we had a really good conversation. And I think we left that meeting with the proponents with a very clear indication that we were going to work towards the pledge that they requested. It's uh, important for the match. There's a lot of federal dollars, you know, at stake. And I do think we have to have a larger conversation as a community about all the different things that we're going to. We have some transformational opportunities in Orno. They're going to cost money and the community needs to be involved in deciding how we do that. But I do think we need to move ahead with the, I was gonna I was gonna call this off the consent agenda so I could ask it to make sure that we would expedite this and be able to meet this with Lori. I was going to call you up and make sure that and maybe with Shelley's benefit. A December eleventh public hearing, when do we vote after that? Is it the January meeting? And if so, is that enough time for you? Because that feels like it's two months after what you asked for in the letter or what James asked for in his letter. I don't mean to conflate you and James as the same person, but.
My understanding is that you could actually vote that night.
Yeah.
You don't have to wait till.
So I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to proceed with what we committed to at the committee meeting where we had. I think every retired librarian in all of eastern and central Maine at the meeting, it felt in the house delighted to have him here. Some of the, some of the residents that were at that meeting are here tonight who spoke in favor of as well. So I'd like to continue forward what we committed to coming out of that committee meeting. So I'll be voting for whatever I need to vote for to move us to the public hearing. Thanks. Sorry Sophie.
Sophie, go ahead.
So can I just um, kind of go backwards? This is not about the the library. This is about the charter. And um, there is a mechanism within the charter that if council took a vote that the residents of this community didn't like. They have twenty days to amass three hundred and seventy signatures that would then send it to a referendum. And I guess as a lame duck town manager, I'm probably going to overstep a little bit, but counselors were elected to do a job and to make decisions. And when you look at the charter, it was clearly the intent of the people who wrote it that council would make decisions and if people didn't like it, you would have to delay those decisions. Like I can't cut a check or float a bond within uh, until that period expires that if people are not happy, they can go to referendum and it just, it makes me a little nervous and I'm looking kind of at staff at the idea of having a perpetual referendum here because that kind of puts us more in a town meeting form of government as opposed to a council town manager form of government. And I'm going to get off my educational soapbox.
Thank you. Sarah, did you have a question?
Um, I think my concern is more what Sophie has raised about. We have a lot of projects coming before us and um, it's concerning to me how many of them we still don't have full information on where we're making this decision. And I'm curious when some of that's coming. We were told um, later in the late fall for some information from DOT and also on the public safety building where I know they're also like equally cramped for space from what we hear that the library staff are cramped. The police are very cramped for space and I just don't want us in a situation where we've promised full money to the library and then later that means the police don't get anything. So I'm curious when the rest of that information is coming our way. And if by delaying this decision process a month, we would have that information, then I would be in favor of delaying a month or two to see that. So I'm anxious to hear about timelines for other um, information that is coming to us.
So in the council planning document that all counselors asked to have um, access to, it um, says that on the twenty seventh of November, you're going to get the um assessment of the public safety building. Um, that is the primary function of that meeting and then uh, a special town meet uh, town council meeting to do some final um, formal acts um, before I leave. Um, and the um, we are getting ready to roll out early January. Uh, yeah, Rob is taking pity on me.
Uh, Rob Yerxa, Public Works. Um, so yeah, the public safety meeting is scheduled for the twenty seventh. What you're going to see there is a full assessment of the existing conditions. And then we're prepared to ask council what the next steps are for that. So um, depending on how you decide to move forward um, with that project, that will sort of set forth the the timeframe for that. I think uh, on the twenty third we you were presented with a a rough um, plan for what those investments, the the years that those would look, I think that still holds. I don't think anything's changed between now and then. So um, but as far as the the DOT project and the raised grant goes, uh, the final report from uh, the consultants, the Bago Technics isn't due until August or September of twenty twenty four. So we're really not going to have a final feel for what the um, ultimate with the with the final scope of that project is or budget for six months or so. Um, because there'll be uh, in early January, we'll begin to share the concepts with council and begin to set up the public outreach process. With a couple of public meetings, uh, one to gather some information and and another to discuss the proposed final um proposal in June. So um, that one's kind of out there. There's a lot of work associated with that one. So.
So I really despise disagreeing with my incredibly capable public works director. But um, I think he's absolutely right in terms of detail. But in terms of planning scope and money, we're going to be between three and three point five million dollars to match that grant. And we already know the goals that that grant is reaching. Um, is trying to, it's trying to leverage between thirty and thirty five million dollars of federal funding. And it is looking at certain pedestrian cyclist road infrastructure issues. We have an estimate of about two million dollars for the sewer line that would need to be replaced under it. So on the one hand, I understand this quest for more information, but on the other hand, um, you're looking if you were going to bond at multiple bonds anyway, because you get into a problem with arbitrage going over that many years. Um, and I think the estimates on um, of any of them on the sewer and the road work are pretty solid. Um, and um, the projects would be scoped to fit within those.
The the numbers that you saw on that sheet with the with the investment plan over the next six to eight years is what the so at this point, that's the order of magnitude that those investments are going to look like.
So Sophie and Rob, what you're telling, what I'm hearing is that when we go to fix the sewer line, the sewer, it's going to cost us two million dollars to fix that. And if at some point we're going to have to do that and we can either get another million and leverage thirty to thirty five million and get other things. No, that's a different.
No, but it would be five point five total. It's, you're going to need three to three point five to leverage the infrastructure
Okay.
work. And when they open up the road um, and take the cement off the road, we're gonna have to.
Sewer work doesn't qualify for the grant. Uh, it's outside that scope. But it wouldn't make any sense to make all these wonderful improvements at the surface without addressing known issues with the service system.
So, good question though. I'm glad that we clarified that.
Can, can I ask, uh, before we range too far off our topic of setting the date for a potential public hearing? Uh, yeah, go ahead.
I would like is at that public hearing, can we have some numbers for taxpayers that show taxpayer impact, not just of the library project, but also of these other projects? Um, because I really, I I I love the library. I want to say yes to this project and I don't want to be deceptive to the community about all the big ticket items coming their way. So I had asked for it before and I think I was told yes that that would come, but I just want to confirm that it will be there at that public hearing for people to see impact of, you know, all of these projects, not just of the library tax wise.
And I'm assuming you mean if we bonded for all of it.
If you've got a proposal that which ones you don't think we need to bond, that's great. But I think for now I'd like to see if they were all bonded because I don't know where else that many is coming from right now. Thanks.
Okay. So we do have an order in front of us uh, to vote on setting the date of the December, setting the date December eleventh for the public hearing to consider town of Orno making the pledge. So if there's no further discussion on the setting the date of the public hearing. Anything on that? Okay, then we should vote on that and we'll need a roll call vote.
Counselor Powers?
Approved.
Counselor Demaret?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
Opposed.
Counselor Laraway?
In favor.
Counselor Berthasell?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
So your vote would be six and one abstention because you have not gone. I apologize. Counselor Wingard?
I am also in favor. Yes.
That was my bummer.
So in accordance with what we said we would do, council chair, that would be six in favor with Counselor Kenny in opposition.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, moving on to order twenty three dash two zero eight, order authorizing employee recognition awards for those employees completing five, ten, fifteen and twenty years of service. It entertains a motion.
So moved.
In a second. Second, somebody second yeah.
Okay.
You're it.
So I pulled this one off just because I wanted to read the names and the years out loud for on record. Culminating at forty years with Chris Brew, but we'll start with the five years Jeffrey Low, Matthew Netto, Pete Yazukovich and Chad Aslan. Ten years, Chase Haas. Fifteen years, Ed Leskey, Dan Merrill, Mike Smart and Rob Yerxa. Twenty years, Kevin Sirway, Sirwa. And uh, again, calling out Chris Brew for forty years of service to the town of Orno.
So if I could just call out for you that um, not only is it forty years of service, but Chris started right out of high school mowing the cemetery. And he now runs a grade five wastewater treatment plant. That is quite a career and um, I think everybody here is very, very um, proud of all that he has accomplished, but he better stay for a few more years.
All right. With thanks. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing done, we'll need a roll call vote each other.
Counselor Powers?
Favor.
In favor.
Counselor Demaret?
You bet. In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Laraway?
In favor.
Counselor Berthasell?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
And Counselor Wingard?
In favor. And motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to order twenty three dash two one two, order authorizing the town manager to pay the town of VZ Maine forty five thousand eight hundred thirty three dollars for the Maine Criminal Justice Academy Basic Law Enforcement Training Program. Cost is mandated by state law with funds drawn from the fiscal year twenty four municipal operating budget. We need a motion. So moved. In a second.
Second.
So I'm going to take this one because it's financial, but um, as we have been in front of um, town council, we've uh, we have had a turnover of police officers. Finally, uh, Chief Merrill has us at full staff, which is awesome. Um, and in this particular environment is a testament to the culture that he has built um, in the police department. But um, our latest hire is is somebody who has been through the Criminal Justice Academy. So the good news is, is once that individual uh, completes the internal training program, uh, he will be all set to go on the road. But, so we get somebody all trained. Under state law, we have to pay reimburse um, the town of VZ for that money uh, for the the expense that they paid for him to go to the academy. This number is not a number that the town of VZ came up with. It's in statute. Um, the individual um, recently graduated uh, within the last year. So we owe a hundred percent of the state reimbursement rate. So that is why it's forty five thousand eight hundred thirty three dollars. By paying this, while we expect this officer to stay with us for years and years and years. If this officer decides to go to another town within the next four years, we will um be reimbursed on that sliding scale for whatever is left of their time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
The only other thing I would add is this is not a budgeted item. So right now, by passing this, we have to pay it. But it is likely that um, come next spring, you're probably going to see a request for reallocation of funds, whether it be from overlay direct um, from fund balance or or something of that nature.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd rather hire away police officers from Auburn than VZ in the future. If you can keep, I'd like that. So but other than that, good job.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing done, we will uh, take a roll call vote on order twenty three dash twelve.
Counselor Powers?
Approved or in favor, whichever is the best.
Favor is good.
Counselor Demaret?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Laraway?
In favor.
Counselor Berthasell?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
And Counselor Wingard?
In favor. And the motion passes unanimously. Moving to order twenty three dash two one three, order authorizing the town council chair to execute an employment contract for an interim town manager to serve until a permanent town manager is appointed with funds drawn from the approved fiscal year twenty four municipal operating budget. We need a motion and a second please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, we have been having discussions over the past several weeks about bringing on board an interim town manager. We have reviewed the qualifications of several candidates and we've entered into discussions with the most qualified. Uh, I'd like to continue those discussions and bring them to a resolution quickly. And in order to do that, I need uh, approval from the council.
Move approval? And also thank you on behalf of all of us for doing the the legwork to find us this person.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, seeing done, we'll take a vote on order twenty three dash two one three.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Demaret?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Laraway?
In favor.
Counselor Berthasell?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
And Counselor Wingard?
In favor. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to order twenty three dash two one four, order adopting the Orno Town Council Service Promise. Motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
One second. All right. Dan, you want to read this or Sophie? Would you prefer to read your background or? Dan, you wouldn't mind reading this?
No, thank you. Um. So we began our work in in May uh, as a council with a facilitated discussion to develop a council work plan. We had a professional facilitator join us for a conversation and we got a report out of that that's linked with the the agenda background. Council identified the development of a service promise as part of our work. Um, and we've shared in the in the agenda background and the uh, the full workshop report and the brainstorming exercise we did to come up with this um, the Your Voice Matters promise. the Your Voice Matters Promise. Service Promise. And we had a focus workshop discussion in July. We had, and it was considered at our ten thirty twenty-three committee meetings and our eleven six twenty-three committee meetings. So this document is something that we've worked on together in council committee meetings with a facilitated discussion. Counselor Powers and I have worked on it. And we've had individual discussions with many counselors and it reflects some of the views. As much of the input that went back and forth individually, which, you know, we're allowed to do as part in terms of drafting things. And it is difficult to draft things as a council where you're trying to collect the, the individual viewpoints of, of everyone and still reach a consensus at the same time. But what the service promise we arrived at was that Your Voice Matters and it's, it's our attempt as a council to set priorities for, for us as a council. And that also sets, establishes a direction and communicates that direction out. And that our commitment to build a strong culture of citizen engagement and trust building. And underneath that, the priorities that we have as part of Your Voice Matters is we want to work hard to bring ideas to life in Orno. We want to ensure that we're listening to everyone. We want to make engagement easy and we want to steward our resources. I'm hopeful that this is something that, you know, not unlike the, not unlike the message we shared around our communication around the leaders, Orno's leadership transition. It's a chance to convey to people in a, in a simple terms what, what our priorities are. And then it allows visibility, but it also allows feedback. And it gives people, when we're talking about future matters, it gives us a chance to, to ground our, ground those discussions and something we've agreed to be a priority. And I'm hopeful that this will be, you know, be endorsed this evening and we'll be able to move forward and as this is a map.
Thank you. Comments and questions? I'd like to first thank Dan and Matt and other counselors who participated in this, both in our formal meetings and in the drafting of this document. I think it captures a lot of what we discussed in our, in our town council workshops and things like that. My concern, and I, I don't know how this becomes sort of active in the document itself, is that the promise that we're making to our constituents is in some way different than the promise that the employees of the town make. So where my job is to facilitate every voice that comes in from the town, sometimes it is the job of a police officer to not facilitate a demand, or it is the job of another town agency to not facilitate a demand. And, and I don't know how we capture in this document that well, we want to be responsive, we want to be collaborative, we want to be great problem solvers. I, I don't want to set up somebody who's trying to do their job to, who maybe cannot say yes all the time, you know? I don't want to set them up to be in a position where they have to be the person that is working at odds with a council promise.
I, I guess I would say that this is the council's promise in terms of how we would, the standards we set for our engagement with the community. We, you know, I, I don't want to list out everyone it doesn't apply to because it doesn't apply to other staff. And I guess, you know, as, as part of the record, you know, a lot of our, our department leaders are here today and they heard the chair of the council express that. Perhaps we could draft a letter to the, to the council lead, to the department lead saying, you know, this is our promise as, as we serve the community in our, in our specific role as a council. It's not somewhat, you know, the planning board has a process that's different and, you know, so there are different different paths forwards and different, for different parts of the, the town operation. And perhaps that's the way to communicate it.
Dan, is it possible to simply add on the very first line, the Orno Town Council has adopted a service promise and set priorities for itself? So that it's clear that this is for us. I mean, that's really what this document is. These are us, what we're being held accountable to, not anyone else, correct?
I would welcome that as a friendly amendment to what's been proposed.
Yeah, great. I think it's a great point, Jeff, and something I hadn't thought of, but that's where I was going to that first line as well. As a spot to, to add that in there. So I think that that should be a line of demarcation.
Could, is there a part of stewarding the resources, a stewarding the, the resources, the time commitment of the town employees too? I, I don't know if we can have something in there on that in the, because the resources are not just financial resources. We need to be, as a council, able to be judicious with the resources that are, that, that the employees have of this town too. That's a resource in a way. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
I think that's, that's sort of in there in the first sentence or implied when it talks about hardworking, essential employees. So to me, that feels like it's encapsulated in, in the framing already.
But great.
Just a, I don't know, that seems like an overstep.
Okay.
To be, to be honest. And so if it isn't there, I don't think it should be because we don't, we don't control staff.
No, I'm thinking more of being.
Resources, dollars and all of that.
I'm thinking more of being a buffer where we're able to be able to not dump things that are unnecessary on the town staff is what I mean by that.
Okay.
I mean, as being that we should be a buffer in the sense that we aren't just allowing every, everything that comes in to just pass right through us as if we're a sieve. That is not, that is not part of the promise. Part of the promise is to be there to listen and not just let everything go through us. Because that there will be times where we need to be able to be like, yeah, you know, that's interesting. That's not part of. Does that make sense?
More sense than I was understanding for sure. Thank you.
But yes, I do not want to, to overstep at all. I want to be a resource, not a, not a overreach. So that's a concern I don't want to get into.
Matt, is that reflected in the second line of that statement about we maintain accountability and set priorities for our limited resources? So are you just suggesting that you need that specified further than that? That's what I read.
Oh, we, we know that that's what that means, then I'm fine with that. I'm totally fine with that.
Do we have any? Do we have an amendment? Did we accept the amended version? Did we have to vote on, do any roll call vote to accept the amended version of the, add the for itself?
I think I move, we move approval of the amendment. So I move approval of this document with the words for itself after set priorities in the first sentence.
I'll second that. If that, if it hadn't been seconded, I'll second it.
So before we vote on that, can I, we can continue to discuss the amendment and the document? Can I just ask for a point of clarification? So this document supersedes the document that we worked on in workshop called Orno Town Council Service Promise and Message Pillars? It builds off that.
Yeah, it builds off that work. And then this is the, you know, the one we've brought a formal consideration and adoption.
Okay, thank you. I have, I have no other questions. Okay, does anybody else? Okay, so looking at the, we have to vote on the amendment first. So let's vote on the amendment to the draft as presented.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Learaway?
In favor.
Counselor Bertha South?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Wingard?
In favor. Okay, so the amendment to the document passes. So now is time to vote on the adoption of the Orno Town Council Service Promise.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Learaway?
Favor.
Counselor Bertha South?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Wingard?
In favor. And the amended document passes unanimously. Okay. Moving on to order, and, and I assume we will add that to the town council section of our website. Okay, moving on to order twenty-three dash two one five, order adopting the policy on the use of town council community building project funds. Can I get a motion on that order, please?
So moved?
A second.
Second.
In the interest of transparency, council talked about this at a recent community development committee meeting. We talked about the issues around the mini grants as proposed and some legal hurdles that, quite frankly, given the upcoming transition, there is not enough time for your staff to be able to support that. And what I suggested was trying to simply roll this into finding a happy medium to roll it in under the town umbrella for this year. So what I've done is I've created policy to guide the use of town council community building project funds. Tried to use the committee meeting as a guide along with the one pagers that Dan and Sarah have been creating. And since this is new, the purpose is as part of the FY twenty-four municipal budget adoption, the Orno Town Council appropriated ten thousand dollars to be used to support the start and growth of new community projects. The support is intended to be one-time investments in citizen-led initiatives. They put the S on there. Focused on creating events, activities, and opportunities that seek to build community and pride of place in an inclusive manner that promotes an overall sense of belonging. The process, a single individual or organization may submit an application provided by the town for funds to purchase materials, host events, engage performers, or consultants, or fund services that build lasting capacity in, instead of your idea, you can tell I was using your language, their idea. And to meet the purpose of this program. The event, activity, or opportunity that requested funds cannot be, that requests. Yep. Yeah, I've, I've already fixed that. That requested funds can all right, I've got a typo here. But cannot support political, cannot be political or activist in nature and must focus on, must focus on creating a sense of belonging among an inclusive audience in a space and manner that complies with the Americans with Disability Act. While all individuals who reside in Orno and organizations or groups that serve this community are eligible to apply, the town council will only fund events, activities, and opportunities that further the town's stated goals and program purpose. Applications will be considered on a first come, first served basis with decisions made as quickly as practicable depending upon the size of the request and complexity of the event, activity, or opportunity. Preference will be given to new initiatives and requests of a thousand dollars or less. Once an application is approved by the Orno Town Council, the applicant will work with staff to create an individualized plan to ensure the event activity or oper, to ensure the event activity or opportunities compliance with the town's operational safety and fiscal oversight. Procedures, please note that given that it is anticipated, volunteers will be responsible for performing the work to support the funding activity, the funded activity. The town will reimburse, reimburse or otherwise pay for reasonable expenses and will specifically waive its procurement procedures for town-funded expenditures less than one thousand dollars. So the idea, as we talked about at the committee meeting, is if we roll it in, they have a plan that town staff signs off on as being compliant with our procedures that we're reimbursing or otherwise making direct payments. Not getting in the way of it, but finding ways to have their idea work is the idea here. And then there is a one-page application, and this is the quick dirty that I would give to Pete to make look nicer. But essentially what we're looking for is who's the responsible person? Are they a person, a loose volunteer group, an incorporated nonprofit agency, or a private or for-profit business or entity, what their address and contact information is? Briefly describe the proposed project. How does the proposed project further the council's program goals? Proposed project dates or timeline. Proposed budget, project budget, requested program funds or other town support. And then specific proposed use for the requested program funds. So one of the things that's important is if council just puts out there, give us an idea and we will fund it. You, you set yourself up for discrimination claims and also freedom of speech claims. So it's important that you tie what you're giving money to, to whatever the value is you're trying to give. And I use the example and I might get yelled at for this later, but I think in Orno, most people would agree that a parade down Main Street sounds like a great idea. Parade down Main Street to celebrate spring is a wonderful event. A parade down Main Street of white nationalists probably is not a wonderful event. If you do not carefully tie what the money is going to be used for to a value goal. If somebody came in wanting to have a parade for something that you find offensive, as long as you have been tying the rest of your application approvals to the comprehensive plan, to inclusion and sense of belonging, and you stay away from things that do not have widespread belonging in the community, you are on much safer ground. However, it's, you are wading into a place of where there is risk, but it's balanced risk.
I, I appreciate the work that went into this and I really comfortable with all this and it, it, the last bullet, I got a little concerned about just how that'll, how that'll be operationalized, but understanding that we're in the midst of a transition and the work to get this done and to get some projects funded. And I do like the idea that we have, you know, built into this, Sophie, and what you've provided is an opportunity to say, really, I want, I'd like a really easy way to get to yes and an opportunity to say no when we need it, that we can tie back to something that's defensible. So it feels like that's a good compromise in terms of what we wanted to do and to the extent that you know, we'll, we'll see how the, you know, the operational plan, creating individualized plan and, and, you know, with town staff and things like that, see how it works. Just, we just I think this is a good chance to get started, but we have in front of us and we can visit again if we need to in terms of what our service promise was that we just passed in terms of making things easy.
If I could just speak to that. In passing this, if council says we are approving this money and here's the timeline, I don't I am getting frustrated at times with the narrative that our staff does not work with residents all the time to make things happen at times on a very quick timeline. And I would hope that council might in the future begin to think about that in the words that, that it uses with regard to staff.
Sure. And I guess I would share that in terms of narratives, that we passed this in our budget in June for ten thousand dollars, hoping we'd be able to give, you know, hundreds of dollars away. And it's now middle of November and we have a policy in front of us that'll do that now. And I think that's a, a good thing. And it doesn't suggest an ease of opportunity is not, is not meant to be a slight on the complications of running a community. This is something we wanted to, we, some of us envisioned as a chance to, people to come. This is something we wanted to, we, some of us envisioned as a chance to, people to come forward, share their ideas with us, and build capacity in our community. And it's not meant to be a slight on, on anyone, and I'm sorry if it's heard that way, but that's not the intent. So, thank you. Sarah. Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Dan, thanks, Sophie. Thanks a lot for putting this together, I really, really liked it. I like all the part about the emphasis on what we're trying to do with the mini grants, so that we are clearly within the law in deciding whether, you know, grants actually fit that criteria or not. So I really appreciate that. I had a couple of questions. One was, at one point, there'd been discussion about me being even more explicit about, you know, the town of Orono does not discriminate based on all these various categories, and that mini grants would be expected to follow that same policy. Is there a specific reason not to put that language in? I guess for me, the clearer we can be on the non-discrimination stuff, I always think the better. And again, for covering ourselves, if we need to say no to an event. So I just wanted to punt that over to Sophie for.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I was trying to keep it to one page, front and back. And I kind of felt like it fit in with our regular policies. But I can add that to the bottom, that is, or even to the top. I think I would, I would say that it, that is important, the ADA is important, and so are safety and other elements.
If nobody is opposed, I would love to just have that added in there as language, because I think it's really important, and it does provide us additional coverage if an event is proposed that really is out of line. But if no one else feels a need other than me, I will cede, that's just my request. And I did want to ask on the fourth bullet, the last time we spoke about this, there were some really specific timelines. There was Sophie mentioning that if something came in by a specific day of the week, it should be able to get to us as a council for a vote at the following Monday meeting. And again, no slight intended, but I do think it's important for community members sometimes to know when they should expect to have it be an answer coming back to them, so that they know how early they need to get their grant in for a deadline that, of an event coming up. Do you know, I mean, if you're working back from an event, someone's trying to schedule, say, on January fifteenth, it might be helpful for them to know. If it comes in by Tuesday, it will get before the council for a vote the following Monday, or whatever date. You gave us a day, Sophie, last time we had that discussion. Can we get some of that in here, so folks know what to expect?
Yep, I can add that.
Can, can we approve these in committee, is that, is that right? We can.
We were told we could approve them in committee last I knew, but is that wrong now?
So you don't approve anything, you give direction to staff and committee, but it's your choice, like, I was simply given a couple of sentences about the next order on the agenda. It didn't go to committee, my understanding is you wanted it on the next council meeting, and.
No, no, I think he's asking whether, when someone put a mini grant in, we could say yes to a mini grant at a committee meeting, and that I thought is what had been told before.
Yeah, you're just giving direction to staff as to what a priority is. It probably will show up on a consent agenda after that, so that there's a, a trail. But if you're spending more than, well, it will be seven hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars, then you're gonna have to go through a different process, but I don't think that will be the case.
All way smaller than that, they're all way under that. And my only remaining one is that I think this has already been being talked about in the community a good bit. I've heard people since our June meeting, lots of people asking about it and talking about it, and it is perpetually talked about as a mini grant fund. So I was just wondering if this could be policy of, to guide use of town council, community mini, building mini grant funds? Just because it's what everyone's already calling it, and I think people will therefore know what it is. Is there a reason that mini grant can't be there instead of project?
So I think what I was trying to work around was the envision that we would just be cutting checks to people, which is what mini grant kind of brings to mind, but you do whatever you want me to do here.
I'd feel better if it was in there, given that that's what it's already been named for six months. And I think we're all pretty clear that there's no check being cut to an individual. People would need to submit receipts to get reimbursed, or the town would pay a vendor or a company directly to purchase.
So I didn't follow, did we, on the, this is before us to vote on, right? So is there a, are we, did we just offer four amendments to? Did you get those, Shelley?
From the way it has been done in the past, understand, you might not want to do it that way now. But something of this degree, where it's not necessarily your specific language, in the past, council would agree that it could, that they approved it in substantially similar format to the discussion, and that allows the language to be morphed to the discussion, the town clerk is gonna look at it, so if I suddenly go awry, she'll catch it. But it stops having to do these one-liner amendments, and I get that you got this late, because quite frankly, the way we were doing it before, council was doing the lion's share of the work, and it got sent to me for direction at the last meeting. So I, I just, I think if you've made your desires known, and you make it clear you want it in substantially the same format as discussed, I would hope we could get it there.
Works for me.
I think that's, I think that's fine. Also noting that, once this gets formatted to go online, there may be some changes to the format of it, as long as substantively, it's fine.
I feel very confident in staff making the small changes we've talked about.
Yep. So, with thanks, I'm really excited to get this off the ground. I understand that a lot of the time that was taken was time in consultation with our attorney and other people, so we didn't have total control over the timeline, but I think it's, it's great to get it going. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, seeing done, let's take a vote on order twenty-three dash two-one-five.
Councillor Powers.
In favor.
Councillor Demaret.
In favor.
Councillor Penny.
In favor.
Councillor Laraway.
In favor.
Councillor Berthasal.
In favor.
Councillor Marks.
In favor.
Councillor Wingard.
In favor. And the motion passes unanimously.
Can I just add something to this framework? And that is, is council's intent to move these funds to the assigned fund list, so that you would add funds to them to come up to ten thousand dollars at the end of each year? Or is this an appropriation that you expect to lapse and get reappointed, re-appropriated each year?
My understanding that we, was that it was council's desire to build this into the budget for, as a planned expense of the town council. But, does that not answer your question? But, I mean, I, is she, so, Sophie, are you asking, like, if someone gets a grant this year, they're gonna be able to get the same? No, I, I don't think that's it at all, we talk about one-time investments to build capacity, yeah.
No, what, I'm gonna talk with the finance committee chair about this, and, and we'll figure, and I'll tell you what we'll do. How's that? I'll talk with Leo.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Order twenty-three dash two-one-six, order authorizing the town manager to expend up to seven hundred and fifty dollars of the town council's community building project mini grant funds to support a Wabanaki winter celebration as proposed by Gabriel Frey.
Move approval.
We need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Powers.
So before you begin, can I just say that the, the dollar amount here is one hundred percent arbitrary? I had to have a number to make an order, I have no idea what the scope is.
A little bit to that, I did speak to Gabriel directly about it. He believes that the fee for this performer is five hundred, but until he confirms that for sure, there was a bit of wiggle room built in, in case that's what he believes it to be. I wasn't also entirely clear if there were some, some supplies wanted for part of the food that would be part of this, and some of the art activities. So I think you guessed very well, Sophie, is what I would say. I actually think it will come in slightly under this, from what I've heard so far. And you all got the email from Gabriel, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we amend it, please, to say mini grant funds, instead of community building project funds? Sure.
Read this email out, since it's not something that is in the record anywhere, or we could.
I, I don't think we, I don't think, I think it's, it was just in.
Just for the community to know, it's a very cool idea, that Gabriel has brought forth, and Gabriel's daughter to bring to us a Wabanaki winter celebration, to be back onto a potluck and do something a little bigger with that.
Great, thank you. Right, any other discussion on this item? Okay, seeing done, let's take a vote on twenty-three dash two-one-six.
Councillor Powers.
In favor.
In favor.
Councillor Penny.
In favor.
Councillor Laraway.
Favor.
Councillor Berthasal.
In favor.
Councillor Marks.
In favor.
Councillor Wingard.
In favor. And the order passes unanimously. Moving on to order twenty-three dash two-one-seven, order authorizing town manager to purchase the FSA system for the public safety facility from Radio Communications Management Incorporated of Portland, Maine, at a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, with funds drawn from the American Rescue Plan Act funds previously encumbered for public safety building upgrades. Take a motion.
Move approval.
A second.
Second.
Okay, Sophie, Rob.
Good evening, Rob Yerkes, the Public Works Director. So, as you know, we've been working through the public safety building assessment, and as part of that project, we promised that if we found some low-hanging fruit, some opportunities to make improvements in the short term that would really affect the work environment over there, that we would bring them back. The alert system is one of those items that is in significant decline, serious condition. There are portions of it that simply don't work. But the other part of it is it's very antiquated equipment. So I think the biggest thing, the biggest issue is that it doesn't have a ramped-up alert system. So when it comes on, it comes on full bore, the bells are ringing, the tones are going off in the entire building. And so, as you can imagine, at two AM, when people are starting to doze off, that can be a bit of a shock. And that can cause some pretty serious health issues for, for staff. So we've been working, Kevin's staff has been working on getting some quotes to rebuild this system. We looked at a few different options in terms of fixing the existing equipment, maybe upgrading the controls, maybe we could make that work. And it's clear that's not the case. The receiving antenna, basically the entire system needs to be replaced. The good news is that the equipment that we're proposing to install would be transferable if council decided to move forward with a renovation of the building. So this system provides that ramped-up call, that's a programmable system, will get the calls system to extend to all the rooms. Right now, not all the rooms have the alert system in them. And so this is kind of a, a basic need for first responder agency. The quote is for seventeen thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents from RCM Management, a well-respected contractor in this field. We worked on trying to get other quotes for similar systems, and we found that if there were, they were way out like six-figure kind of quotes, or they simply couldn't find a competing quote. So we're recommending approval of, of this proposal from RCM. Like I said, they're a, a well-respected firm, and they're going to design, provide the materials, and install the system.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Speaking as someone whose college dorm alarm was one inch from my head in my bunk bed, they definitely need this if it's as loud as that was or louder. It is a real thing. So thank you for bringing this to us, I wouldn't want anyone to be subjected to that.
And I'll say the funds to, to pay for this are coming from the existing budget, no initial funds are needed.
Thank you. Okay, there are no further questions on this item. Take a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Powers.
In favor.
Councillor Demaret.
In favor.
Councillor Penny.
In favor.
Councillor Laraway.
In favor.
Councillor Berthasal.
In favor.
Councillor Marks.
In favor.
Councillor Wingard.
In favor. And that order passes unanimously, thank you. That ends new business, let's move quickly to council committee and representative reports. I'm just gonna introduce each standing committee that we have. If you have anything to report, please share out. Finance and operations.
I don't think, nothing to report out, do I? Sophie's looking at me.
I would just say that you might just report out on our meeting around a proposed budget structure that will be left for the next manager, but that you and I have reached a general agreement.
Yes, and actually, I, I guess more for committee, though. I do also have, Sophie provided some, some numbers that I think that we need to take a look at and just be aware of with staff leaving and paying out payouts that are involved with paying for vacations and all of that stuff, and, and talking about where we should be getting those funds from. So that is a future committee meeting discussion, but yes, Sophie and I met to look at the, at the budget format, and I think we're in agreement on how we're, how we're looking, so. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you. Community development, Dan. Thanks, Sherwin Guard. We had, I talked about acknowledgements, the work in the basin, and the basin neighborhood community is doing really supportive of that, appreciate those efforts. We would like to share and turn it over to Councillor Marks for an update on the potlucks.
Thanks, we held our second one on, did anyone know what date it was? November fifth, I think. It was co-hosted with the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee, who did a tremendous job setting up and decorations for Day of the Dead, activities for Day of the Dead, which were brought forth. I have such a list of people to thank, there were more than seventy-five people in attendance. The thrift store and the Orono Health Association were gathering supplies to restock lots of things in the Keith Anderson kitchen for us, so that's fully restocked. Big thanks to Carrie Lee Montcastle and Deb Avril. Kathy Pollard donated things to the kitchen. Darcy and Wally Campbell did huge kitchen cleaning leading up, which was great. We had the Ellis family providing extra help up in the kids area. Humane students who came to help set up. Orono High School football players who came to help clean up.
I think it was the class of twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, I just recognized them as football players, and clap for twenty-twenty-five. Thank you for the correction. Victor and Sarai Ortega Jimenez, who performed Mexican music for folks. Claudia and Carlos, who set up all of the decorations and things ahead of time. The Orono Historical Society, Terry Morrow and Mary Ann Eason in particular, who really highlighted the Italian-American community for us at about nineteen hundred. And I'm sure I am missing somebody, but basically, it was a rollicking good time with lots of volunteer labor making that happen. The next one is December third. I know Art and Harvey will be performing, and harmonica is highlighted in that, and a lot of harmonica things coming our way. I think just for council to be aware that we may need to take a look at our budget and talk with staff a bit about, I don't know, the stove, we were told ahead of time, might leave because of a vent issue, and I think that'll be coming at us in some facilities discussions. Is that right, Sophie, about the vent and the stove, and maybe what it takes to get a stove back in that space again?
Yeah, it takes a little over ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so I'm just aware it left, so that was the first time it was gone. And that's really all I have, it was a great event, there were lots of councillors who were there, and lots and lots of community members, so thanks to all.
I think you forgot to mention the organizational work of Councillor Marks and Councillor Berthasal for their, and so much, well, get all the stuff that you brought in, and all the stuff we're gonna take, it's, it's remarkable, so thank you for, on behalf of all of us, thank you for what the two of you do to make these events successful. And that's it for the committee report. Thank you. Councillor Laraway, do we have anything on comp plan implementation?
Only one recent discussion, which we had last week, on the idea of a skate park in town, and we sort of felt that out, and I think, if I remember correctly, we'll be putting out a, a question in the Order Observer for folks who are interested, potentially seeing us. if I remember correctly, we'll be putting out a, a question in the Orno Observer for folks who are interested in potentially seeing a skate park developed here in town, basically to voice that they are supportive of that idea. But other than that, that's all that we have in committee.
Great, thank you very much. Councilor Berthasal, do we have anything from DEIB?
Nothing that wasn't highlighted in the potluck report.
Thank you. I don't believe we've had any activity on OEDC. We do have an ad hoc search committee at this time. Not sure that we have a report, although we have a lot of information. We'll be putting that on a, a agenda really soon. Okay, so that is council committee representative reports. I do not have a separate report, but I believe we have a couple town manager items.
I managed to give, oh yeah, the only town manager item I have is we had three executive sessions that were not put on the agenda for tonight because of the length of this agenda and the executive session that we have next. I would very much like to try to schedule a special meeting for that, talking with council chair. It sounded like you had already set aside November sixteenth as a potential date. And
I think that was a day that we had said we might have to meet for interviews or process or something.
No, I think it was tomorrow. Yeah, it was tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, it was not. What time on the sixteenth? That's tricky, but possible.
Oops, I should have my microphone on. What time on the sixteenth?
Well, you tell me.
Is earlier better by chance?
Earlier is better.
I can't be here at all on that day.
Later is better for me, so sorry, but.
I'm flexible.
Could we do four PM?
That'd be fine with me.
I can, I'll zoom in. I'll do whatever I can to be here and make it accommodate.
Okay, yep.
Matt and Jeff, does that work for the two of you to?
I could, I could do Thursday at four.
Okay.
And Jeff, is this when we'll be looking at search firm decision?
No.
This is, we'll, we'll have two executive sessions related to bargaining, one on economic development. We may have a fourth executive session. But we don't, we don't have confirmation of that fourth one yet.
So that's the scripture dinner. Are you guys okay with staff serving?
That's the.
That's the Scott Scripture Community Dinner normally counts.
Yeah, it would be better to choose a different time and date.
Yeah. Okay, is it?
What about, could you do earlier on Wednesday? So this is all executive session. That's the only thing. We, and I do not anticipate any action coming out of that. You're, I'm looking for direction on three different issues.
I can do earlier Wednesday.
So we've got a planning board at six-thirty, so as long as we could be done by six-thirty.
I teach on Wednesdays and I'm not available.
I teach from five to seven in Bangor. I, I could do a three o'clock, but I.
What about Tuesday, the twenty-first?
I, I can't be here for that.
Right before Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, I, I can't do that either.
Is tomorrow a possibility? That some of us had blocked already, or was that something else booked with staff, Sophie?
If you could do.
Four to six PM?
Yep, let's, I just need to get an agenda out tonight, but I can do that. And I can't do anything until four-thirty.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be, I have a five, a commitment at five, so.
Yeah, so maybe that doesn't work. What was the problem on Wednesday? We had Jeff and Sonia gone.
Yeah, I, I teach on Wednesday night.
Yeah.
I do also have Wednesdays.
Okay.
Tuesday works just fine.
Could we start earlier on Monday, the twentieth?
That would be fine with me.
So Jeff, you've got teacher conferences?
Yeah, Leo's gonna lead the meeting in my stead on Monday. It's possible I can zoom in for a significant portion of that. I'll just have to duck out when I have parent-teacher conferences.
So what time would you, so this is just a committee's meeting. Not just on the agenda for the committee's meeting, I had the budget that, overruns that we talked about. I had the October financials and the audit, the audit presentation. So if you wanted to start early, I just, I don't know when you'd like to start and.
Could we try it for four?
Starting at four is good with me.
I could start at four on Monday.
Four?
Okay, four, and if, Leo, if you'd be willing to coordinate in person, I'll zoom in as I'm able.
Okay.
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 Jeff, when is the search firm decision next being talked about?
Well, I would like to put it on our next regularly scheduled meeting, but not Monday, because we already have a full slate. I mean.
Okay, I thought we had said we were talking about it tonight, so I misunderstood something last week, and I just want to be sure that I'm clear to the companies that I'm speaking with about when this decision is on our agenda.
Okay, let me confer, let me talk to Sophie about the next possible time that we can meet, and then.
Twenty-seventh, we've already got it set up as a special council meeting because you have appointments that need to be made, contracts that need to be agreed to. And we have Rob's, not Rob's, but the public safety. I would suggest that we do the public safety first, so that, because we have a consultant that's coming up and that we do the other piece and have your last item on the agenda, the search discussion, and if you have a decision after that, we can do that, but that way you'll have as much time as you need.
Yeah.
So I can let folks know that we'll be talking about this on the twenty-seventh with the idea to make a decision.
On the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, I won't be here at that meeting. I'll be on an airplane likely, so that's fine. I've given all the information I have out to the rest of you now anyhow, so just to let you know.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be just, I'll be, not be able to attend in person at that meeting either, and I wanna just kinda so I'll zoom in to the extent that I can.
Okay.
Can we do some shuffling for the twentieth, maybe? Put that on there or no? Oh, well, you're not gonna be there, Jeff, but.
It seems important in the sense that some of these timelines, I've been given direction from council that there's some concern about getting started on. So if it were possible for Monday, I think that would be great, but if it's not, then.
Well, how long a discussion do we envision? We have all the information in front of us. We've been provided with, with all the data, so.
As of today, the last proposal officially came in. It didn't change the numbers I'd already put out, but I sent that to you all this afternoon. You have it all in front of you.
So I just want to highlight that this disconnect is part of what's causing your delay, your scheduling frustration, is that your town manager's job is to facilitate the council process. And if I don't know, or the person who sits in this seat does not know specifically what your timelines are, what your priorities are, is not getting copies of documents, it makes it really hard for us to facilitate a transparent process. I would encourage that I can flip agendas around to meet council's need, but when it becomes an internalized council process, it makes it really hard to engage staff. And I saw it with the mini grant piece. I'm seeing it now, and I think that it is causing like two separate groups spinning, and it's causing a lot of friction as opposed to working together.
I certainly don't want any friction, and I thought it was stated quite clearly at our last meeting that we were talking about it tonight. We all heard it. So I don't know what happened.
I think Sarah, that was, I, I'll take the blame for that. I think that was my mistake. I thought having a subcommittee, council committee representative reports item, assuming that we now had an ad hoc committee, I thought that was sufficient. Clearly, I should have put it as a separate agenda item. I will do so in the future to get us past the speed bump. I want to make sure that we have a clear plan going forward. If we can take action on this before the twenty-seventh, I'd be happier. If we may have a pretty full agenda already on the twentieth, so I just want to make sure before I dump that on our agenda maker's lap, on Sophie, that I'm not asking her to pull a rabbit out of a hat that can't be done with our prior obligations. So if we can commit to having a very brief discussion on it on the twentieth, because we already have all the information, I think we may be able to fit one item. However, if this is gonna become a wide-ranging discussion about the merits of a search process rather than the selection of a vendor, I, I think we're gonna need more time.
And I, and I was just assuming it was a vendor, vendor discussion, just to be clear. I, I don't know that. I think that is a bigger, the rest of it's a bigger decision. So, sorry, I think, I think we maybe are having our lines crossed a little bit there. I was talking about getting to the vendor, because I think timing-wise, we, you know, to Sophie's point, I think there, there is a disconnect, and we're doing stuff kind of, it's a little disjointed, I think, for all of us, so I do think having just the discussion about the vendor would be a great idea, if we could squeeze that in on the twentieth. And like you said, I think we have most of the information in front of us, so all of the information in front of us.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. I think it'd be great to put it on both agendas, a vendor decision on the twentieth, and the other details that need to be talked about on the twenty-seventh, so that it happens twice in separate chunks would make sense for me, and.
Vote on the twentieth, all right?
On the vendor is what we were talking about. And as far as like information and packets, my understanding was that I'm supposed to be writing those to council chair who decides what goes to management at this point. So that's what I've been doing. If that's not what I'm supposed to be doing, someone needs to have, no.
That's fine. I will make sure that town manager has all our documentation and that it, that everything's kosher with that. All right, so we have a plan to go forward. Okay, thank you. Are there any other future agenda items or items of concern? Any public petitions? Any further public comment? Anybody online?
No hands raised at this time.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion going to executive session pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five, six A, to discuss a personnel matter.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, there'll be no council action after this executive session. All those in favor moving into executive session?
You need a roll.
Yeah, roll.
We need a roll call vote. I'm sorry.
Sorry, everybody.
In favor.
Councilor Demerit.
In favor.
Councilor Kenny.
In favor.
Councilor Laraway.
In favor.
Councilor Berthasal.
In favor.
Councilor Marks.
In favor.
Councilor Wingard.
In favor.
Rob?
Yes?
You have the link to the executive session?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna stay in this room, but we're gonna move to the table.